It's called to order the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting for Monday, November 22, 2021. Francisco, please call the roll.
Commissioner Brahm.
Here.
Commissioner Marhol.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Henigan.
Here.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Commissioner Pelletier, sorry.
Yeah.
Chairperson Mateo.
I am here. We have a quorum. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting minutes of October 27, 2021?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion, any edits? Commissioner Matthews?
Yeah, I'm identified on here as having voted if too adjourned. I'm sure I would've, but I wasn't here, so.
I did miss that one. Anything else?
There were, there's a few just locations where spaces are missing. It makes it hard to read, so you can just read through. And then I had just a couple of clarifications for some statements that I made that I can provide a markup. Okay?
So yeah, maybe going forward, if we can break up the text a bit into paragraphs. Any other changes? So with those edits, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nay? Any abstain? Motion carries. Thank you. We don't have any visitors or citizen requests in front of us, so we'll move on to the village board update.
So what was the date? At the previous, oh, sorry. At the previous board meeting this past Thursday, the variance for 178 Maplewood was approved by the village board. I don't think there were, yeah, I don't think there were any concerns for the variance. The, what was it? The firm EGRET and OX will be presenting the TOD steering committee at the next board meeting. They will be there on December 2nd to kind of give an overview of the TOD steering committee and, you know, any sort of progress that's been, that's been made thus far. And then we've also been, Ashley and I have also been meeting with trustee Pollock regarding clarification with accessory structures in the ordinance to kind of clear up some language, make it a little bit, little bit more specific, a little less vague. So we have meetings with trustee Pollock. We met with him, was it last week, week and a half ago, I think, to kind of go over anything else that might need some clarification regarding those definitions and the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. And that's been pushed off to, because they have to keep tabling it to a date certain, so it's been pushed off to one of the February meetings. I don't remember which one.
I think it was the 17th tentatively is what they had said, yeah.
And when the agenda for that December 2nd board meeting is available, would you forward it to the commission just to send it as a reminder?
Mm-hmm.
So you can watch it live on YouTube or Facebook. You can watch it afterward. It will be recorded, or you can attend. Okay. Moving on to old business, work plan discussion. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Francisco, are you leading that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Am I just reading over this? Or, okay. Okay. So the TOD zoning code update, the Planning and Zoning Commission plans to review, discuss, and make recommendations regarding the TOD supportive zoning code updates from the Regional Transportation Authority and the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. Proposed zoning code updates promote walkability and support transit-oriented development in the Riverside Central Business District and along the Harlem Avenue corridor. The updates also address current development trends and support the village's historic preservation goals. The work of the appointed steering committee will be coming to a close, and proposed amendments will need to be comprehensively reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The commission will evaluate the proposed amendments and, following one or more public hearings, recommend changes to the village board for adoption and implementation. This work should be completed by May 2022, and more information can be found at the following link on the agenda packet. And the second item on the Planning and Zoning Commission work plan for 2022 are the impervious surface calculations, study and recommendations. Planning and Zoning Commission plans to study how to improve upon existing impervious surface calculations in the river, in the Village of Riverside, sorry. And work may include doing research on surrounding communities and the appropriate agencies, Metropolitan Water Reclamation District being one example, regarding the, regarding determination of impervious surface calculations, the analysis of materials that are commonly used, analysis on how to best determine the percentage of coverage on lots within the village, and analysis of what materials may be preferred for sufficient, for sufficient water retention and management, presenting examples of effective sustainable water management design and best practices, and recommending effective zoning code amendments to strengthen, that could strengthen and clarify the village's approach to water management and retention. These efforts will provide for consistent impervious surface calculations by staff and will give residents a framework for planning purposes. Okay, mask back on. And then, let's see.
Just see if they have any discussion or changes.
Is there any, any discussion or any changes or any input for the work plan for next year?
So this is a draft. Eventually, when, when we approve it, which could be tonight, it could be at our next meeting, then it'll go to the village board where the chairperson for each commission will be presenting their work plans. So any thoughts, comments, changes, additions, subtractions?
I think I've already noted that this, this is sufficient material to discuss for the year, especially when we start talking about the zoning code updates. Quick question, if I may. I assume that the comment about addressing current, taking into account current development trends is going to be identified in the document, what they're calling current development trends.
Yes.
This is the document.
I, it's, sorry, it, the recommendations that we're going to receive with updates says that these updates also address current development trends. Is that something we're deciding on, or are these current development trends things that the consultant identified and is suggesting that we should be taking into account when we do our updates? Does that make sense?
It, it makes sense. Thanks, Commissioner Marhol. Yes, the, the consultant has identified during its meetings with the steering committee some things that have been, been trending in, in development. And so I would anticipate that there would be mention of those things in the upcoming presentation from, from the planning consultant at the December 2nd meeting. And if it's not clear what those might be, then they, of course, could be pulled out and discussed by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For clarity, I had a couple of comments on that same first paragraph. It's unclear who the, and maybe it's just a matter of the whole process, but it sounds like in the first sentence, these zoning code updates that are being proposed are coming from the RTA and the CMAP. Is that who they're coming from? Are they also coming from the steering committee, or are they coming from only the steering committee? That's one question I had.
It's, it's everybody.
Okay, so maybe that was, it just sounds like we're getting proposals from outside entities that we're going to vote on, you know, or we're going to review. And I assume this, this document is going to be seen by not just the PCC, but the rest of the public as to what our charge is. So I'm just wondering if something like that could be clarified. And then in the last sentence, similarly, it says, "The commission will evaluate the proposed amendments and, following one or more public hearings, recommend changes to the village board for adoption and implementation." So just out of a need for absolute clarity, recommend changes, I would say, to Riverside zoning code, or something like that. So it's really clear what's happening here. And then I had, just had a question about why is May 2022 the date?
That's because we've entered into an intergovernmental agreement with them, and it has to have a date to terminate.
Okay.
And we've already, the village board has already extended it by...
Nearly a year.
Oh, but just recently, you said it a few months, right? Anyway, it's because of that.
Yeah, so it, I think it was supposed to, prior to the pandemic, to end either early this spring or this summer. And so in light of the additional work that had to happen with the steering committee and the amount of evaluation and review that the proposed code will uptake, the idea that they would work with us through this spring, through the proposed adoption in May would be, would be ideal.
So that's the adoption by the village board of the changes. That's the completion of the work?
Correct.
So may, I don't know if that's necessary to make that clear, too, that this work, it's not the PCC's work. It's the village board taking action. That has to be completed by May 22. Our work will be much more, will have to be completed sooner than that.
Hopefully, yes. And you're correct in clarifying that, that it's the village board's work that ends it. And regarding the first sentence, technically, the proposed changes are coming from these agencies, but the steering committee has worked with them along the way to refine them and tailor them more to Riverside. It's just that formally, the end product comes from one of the agencies.
Okay. Just for our residents' benefit, I think it would be beneficial to make that clear. And I've looked at the, the TOD's webpage or whatever, and there's not that much information on there. And there's a few similar kind of statements in there. So it just, I think residents might feel a little unclear about what's happening. So if there could be more clarity, that's just my suggestion. And then again, just as to what this commission is doing versus the overall project, because this is our work plan. This is going to be in our work plan.
We can take that last sentence out that has May 2022, because you're right, it doesn't apply to us or our plan. I added that one. Anything else? Please.
Just out of curiosity, is, are there repercussions to not having it completion by May 2022?
I think if that was looming on the horizon, they would make another change to the IGO, IGA, and do another extension.
Okay.
Do you think differently?
Most likely. I think that there, this was a grant, and so at a certain point in time, that the funded grant would end up terminating or have using those funds. And so we're doing our best to extend within the amount that they've allowed us. So it's possible that we would continue a working relationship with them, and it's just, I think we'll try our very best to assess what the situation is as it gets into springtime.
Other edits, changes, additions? Okay, well, do we want to vote on this tonight to approve it pending those changes, or would you rather see it back in December? If we, do we know for sure if we're having a meeting in December?
So far, yeah.
I believe there will be items on, on the menu for a December meeting on the 20th.
Or we can wait and see the final, final edits and vote in December. What's your preference?
I would prefer to see the final document.
My inclination would be to vote now, just because we don't know what's going to be on the agenda in December. So it might be easier to, for you to dispense with this.
Commissioner Brahm, do you have an opinion?
I'd like to see the final edits.
I was just going to agree with Commissioner Matthews. I would be fine, since it's just a work plan. It's not, maybe it is more binding than I'm thinking of, but I would be fine voting today, but I can wait until December. It's not a big deal, I think. Well, we have some commissioners, some commissioners who want to wait, and we have that flexibility. And I don't think it'll take that much time in our meeting. So let's look forward to seeing the edits next month, please. All right. Moving on to new business, an initial discussion regarding calculation of impervious surfaces.
Yeah. So previously, staff requested information from MWRD regarding calculations for impervious surfaces regarding, with regards to various types of materials. The, I don't know what page this is, but there is a chart in the packet, kind of giving a very brief and simple overview of the various surface types for whether it's gravel, graded areas, native plantings. And the contact for MWRD explained it just in very simple terms. So the, the chart has, you know, various numbers. Essentially, the higher the number, the more water runoff that material gives off. So the, you know, given all other conditions are the same for the property, something like a sidewalk is going to create more runoff than, you know, a grass area. So that's just a very brief kind of overview. There is a larger, this is part of a larger report, which is linked in the, in the PDF copy of the, of this packet. And that was just the very kind of, you know, like what we reached out in terms to kind of get an idea of how various surfaces, you know, kind of, what kind of water runoff they generate for the various types of materials. And then staff, we can also go more into the report if the commission feels that it would be a good idea to kind of get a better idea of how to calculate that and maybe incorporate that with, you know, the, within the village and, you know, when we do reviews for the various surfaces here as well.
So then just ask them about what for discussion and the questions.
Oh, um, where is it? Does, would, what info does the commission believe would be helpful to have, you know, to have and to review so that the conversation, you know, can kind of take place and, you know, everybody has a good understanding of, of these numbers and what, what happens with these materials?
Well, thank you for getting some of this information. One question I have is, does MWRD have a standard way of calculating impervious surfaces? So that's maybe for our next conversation, because my memory was with Ames, as they did it a little bit differently than the village had been doing it. But before we get to that, I think it'd be helpful for all of us to know, how does staff currently calculate, you know, what materials, what percentages, what, what's excluded?
Okay.
Anything you can tell us about the process?
So currently, currently, we do, I think it's a, it's an all or nothing, right? Is that for calculating?
Generally, yes.
Yeah, generally, it's, it's just an all or nothing kind of approach. There's no set, you know, if this is concrete, this is how we measure it. If this is permeable pavers, this is how we measure it. It's just kind of, if it's on the, on the property, it's, you know, counts toward the impervious surface calculation. So that's generally, oh, sorry.
No, that, it's a good explanation. The only thing I would add is that when we have had projects go out for engineering review, and they're looking at surfaces and other attributes of a project, right, they have indicated that things like pervious pavers are not, you know, looked at differently than essentially a pervious surface, a grass or native planting. And we can observe that through other data and, for example, MWRD's information, this is, this is not how they're calculating that surface. So we, when we're reviewing a project, are looking at these areas where people may be putting in, you know, pervious pavers or permeable pavers, and we don't have tools to calculate that in a way that's different than just an open grass area. And so that's, that's one distinction that we do have. So, but other structures, so any accessory structures, a deck, a primary structure like a house, a pool is actually a question in our, in our review as well. So an open pool with the ability to take in water is currently deemed as a pervious surface rather than an impervious surface, despite the possibility of that pool being covered, right? It's taking up a land area, and then with the cover, it couldn't absorb any more water. So there's, there's these little kind of differences in our code or, or things that aren't quite clear in how to calculate some of those attributes. And so that's something that staff would probably look at a little bit more deeply, or provide examples for how other communities are, are doing such a thing. And you reached out to a couple of
Yeah.
communities to start that conversation?
I reached out to a handful of communities. Trying to think, Oak Park, for example, they, their ordinance states that they discount 20% of the total impervious surface if they have permeable pavers installed. Brookfield also will give credit to permeable pavers, but they have to be installed correctly. It's not just a matter of putting them on the grass and saying, "These are permeable pavers." So they do a review of that to ensure that they are installed correctly. I believe La Grange, they do an engineering review. It wasn't very clear on the website, so I have to double check with them. And those were the handful of communities that I reached out to, and I have a few other ones that I'm looking into as well.
So we can, we can summarize those and provide a, a more detailed narrative or, you know, summary of, of those types of codes to help the conversation. But we started that work.
Great. So you would get the plat of a property and the principal structure, accessory structure, accessory buildings, those are all, they would be zero in terms of being permeable. Same for the driveway, same for patio. Those make sense. So then you calculate the amount of green space?
Mm-hmm.
And that would be 100. You said it's all or none?
Correct.
Okay. But then, okay, so, sorry, please remind me, permeable pavers are considered zero or 100?
Those would be, I think we consider those zero, right, for permeable pavers?
That they, they're currently, their ability to absorb water is the same as having a, a grass area.
Okay.
Commissioner Miller often asks, "Well, what about decks?" How is that calculated right now? So are you talking about a raised deck?
Right. I'm talking about if you have a deck and there's water is going to, just like a permeable paver, it's probably going to go through the gaps between boards or fake boards. So it isn't the question really, what's the soil underneath or what's underneath, and not the deck itself. And I'm not sure if, so how do we do that now?
A deck is deemed an accessory structure that doesn't account for those gaps where the water would flow. So you might have a raised deck. Like, I used to live in a property with a raised deck with, you know, gaps in between the boards and then a paved surface underneath that, that area. If you have some type of gravel underneath a raised deck, same, same thing. There may be some water infiltration or penetration, but it's not the same as having a, you know, native plantings of some kind or a garden underneath that area. It's hard to tell, when you have a plat, of course, where that structure falls, because it's just a blank area unless it's otherwise marked. So we don't, we don't always know what, what's what on a plat if you just have a block or a bunch of squares on it.
So does the village tend to give that a zero permeability, like a roof, the same as a roof basically, or driveway?
Yes. And I didn't want to put words in your mouth that you're doing this off of a plat. Maybe you go in person, maybe you're out there measuring. I don't know exactly how you do it.
Typically, it's just from the plat. Some plats will designate the material, others don't. It just kind of depends on what, in terms of the, the surface, that's, you know, some will say it's brick, concrete, asphalt. But typically, it's, it just depends, but we just do it from the, from the plat when we're reviewing.
Commissioner Marhol?
It seems like we're leaning towards this already, but I think for our purposes, we're going to have to get into more detail with regards to the materials. For example, the deck question. It's not a impervious surface if water is allowed to drip through and get into the ground. But then it requires you to know what, what is below. And we dealt with this with the swim club, where we, they are gravel underneath their deck so that it can absorb water. And then you also brought up another point, which is Brookfield, which says having some bricks out there with gaps isn't good enough. It has to be put in properly. And I think one of the things that you're going to be faced with, and this is going to be more work, is it's not just having the bricks there. It's making sure that they are properly spaced apart. It's making sure that whatever material goes between the bricks allows the water to percolate in, and then also that underground construction. You saw that with the village's new commuter lot. That is a pervious surface. That is very different than some of these typical brick driveways that we have. So I think you are leaning towards a more nuanced calculation regime, and we're going to have to figure out exactly what that looks like. And then the other item I would do, you have the table 510, but there's also a whole calculation that goes into what does the volume become because of that surface. And I think there's going to need to be a little discussion about what rainfall intensities are being used. This is going to be a tough definition, or tough explanation to write to make it explainable without making it a treatise. But understanding rainfall events and the two-year storm and the five-year storm and the 10 and the 50 and the 100 is important. And I think it is understandable, because we deal with it with the river all the time, about what event we're dealing with this year. You know, we have continuous 100-year events. And so you may need a little bit more explanation text with this.
Commissioner Henigan?
I wouldn't expect answers to any of this this evening, but when this comes back to us next, I would like something in the way of some more background and context for what we're looking at and why. I think before I can really get into the details of the numbers, the different types of surfaces and all that, I'd want to know more about what the purpose is of our impervious area calculation, if it's strictly stormwater or if there are other intentions. For example, is it to limit visual bulk on a property? Or is it just stormwater? And assuming stormwater is at least the primary function of this, how else does Riverside manage stormwater and how does this fit into that? I think that would help me sort of determine where we're trying to go.
Just to echo Commissioner Henigan's point, the reason that we're doing it, because I don't believe it's really for stormwater management. I mean, we follow the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. Is that correct? For, for stormwater runoff, detention, sizing of pipes, that type of thing.
Yes.
So, so we'll continue to follow them. But with regard to kind of the bulk, or I guess how much of the site is covered with But with regard to kind of the bulk or, I guess, how much of the site is covered with impervious, I think it would be good to know what other parts of the ordinance will help control that because if we, if we say that permeable pavers are basically like grass, then you can pave your entire site. You could have zero green space. So, I think we just want to know what other controls we have to make sure that we, we are preserving open space and green space.
So, some of the data that we've been collecting, it's, it's taking a little bit of time to process our certificates of compliance, but we are working our way through a, a collection of data that ranges from, oh, excuse me, we have percentages of, well, we have a lot area, percentages of the bulk coverage, the impervious surface coverage as was calculated. We're looking at, you know, accessory structures or accessory buildings as part of that. And then there were also other discussions earlier in this year about setbacks and interest in just having more data about that. And so that, those types of things are all being collected along with zoning district. And so the analysis of those things might be helpful through this conversation, especially the, the bulk and the impervious surfaces and kind of where, you know, I think from a staff perspective, it's helpful to know kind of at what point or in what zoning district and what size lot do some of these concerns get really tight? Where we most see projects where people are, are running into lot ratios that exceed the current allowance for impervious surfaces. And so we're taking a look at that and happy to, to share that information. We're only about five months in, but I don't know how many properties are, have been looked at so far, close to 100 through what looks like May, so.
Other thoughts?
To Commissioner Hennigan and Commissioner Peltier's point, I think there was a sewer study that was done, remind, maybe about 10 years ago now, that may have some good language about the impacts of stormwater into our system. It was done by Burke, it was done for the village. Can find a copy and send it to you if you want, but it'll take me a little while.
We'll look, we'll take a look at that. Thank you.
I have a comment or a question about this table, and I'm not technical in any way. So, there were just a few things in here that I didn't understand, and I know that it's not your table and you're taking it from the MWRD. But I don't understand, so, under the surface type and the curve number C, impervious is 98, but then water, open water is 100, wetlands is 91, and non-compacted gravel areas is 91. There's just some things that to me, as I guess a non-technical person, I don't understand why those would have the same number or why open water is 100. And you don't really need to give me an answer now, there's just, I'll need more explanation in the future as to what these numbers mean. And there was one thing I noticed when I was looking through the, just briefly looking through the larger report, is that MWRD doesn't apply these things to single-family homes, was my understanding, which totally surprised me.
Yeah, the Cook County has a water management ordinance, and from that, it, it does not apply to single-family homes. It's for developments, commercial, infrastructure. But that doesn't mean we can't use it as a source for getting ideas of materials to consider.
If, if that's, if, I don't see why it wouldn't apply unless we find there is a reason why it shouldn't apply to small residential lots.
So, I, I think that the table is calculating runoff and the purpose is to calculate detention. So, that's kind of the primary purpose for these runoff numbers. And the MWRD just doesn't require single-family residential to provide detention, mostly, I think, because they're small and, and to manage that kind of permitting would be, I think, an overwhelming task. But for instance, if it's a subdivision, they would use this table and they would be required to provide detention, so. It's just a little background.
I like the idea of pursuing rain gardens or having a, a calculation for rain gardens. That could be challenging if somebody's redoing their backyard or front yard and it hasn't been done yet, so you'd have to follow up on those. I'd like to go back to the, the pool. In that report that you linked to, I have a vague memory that they had a definition of what pervious or permeable was. So, is the idea that what we're really trying to figure out is can water get through a material and get anywhere near the, the water table? In which case, a pool would not be pervious. And when we did the swim club, they didn't, that was not calculated as part of their pervious calculation.
I think the issue is, is that for, depending on the facility, and this is where we're going to hit nuance on awful lot, is when water lands on a body of water, if that body of water cannot store that drop of rain, then it ends up elsewhere. And it's the ending up elsewhere problem that we're really addressing. If it would stay there and be an infinite sink, then it would be fine and it would be fully absorptive. But Swim Club, for example, or any other typically have a maximum elevation that that water can be at, and beyond that, the water is dumped out. Like I said, it would depend very much on the design of whatever it is.
My point being, I think we want to have a definition for what counts as being permeable or pervious. Any other thoughts? Any other features you want us to attend to? It would be helpful to have a table that compares other communities and what they do, if it can even put itself into a table.
I'll bring this up. Not sure if I want to go here, but I will anyway. With the idea of rain gardens and native grasses being perhaps better for natural purposes and absorbing rain, we may run into some issues with the idea of what becomes an unkempt landscape or not. And I think that's more of a political question than anything, but it's going to be something we're going to have to at least mention and address, that a rain garden is not going to be considered a piece of unkempt landscaping, for example. And I realize that I'm bringing more, bringing up more of a problem than a solution with that comment.
And then you might have the next owner, owner decide to take it out and then, okay, we're back to grass. Commissioner Hennigan?
Kind of the opposite of that comment. I would like to see if, however we're looking at this, if it's a way to encourage people to provide detention features on their prop, property. I'd, I'd like to incentivize that in some way. You know, typically, I would think that would be some sort of green infrastructure for a single-family home, but I think that would be something we'd want to try to encourage.
Come here, sorry, indirect, I'm in favor of the more green stuff, but I think that some of our rules may be legacy and will not be quite as, if you read them to the letter of the law, not quite so understanding of a rain garden or grass over six inches or what have you. That's more where I'm going with my commentary.
Yeah, we definitely don't want to create conflicts in the ordinance and the codes.
Commissioner Brom, did you have your hand up?
I did not.
Okay. Commissioner Peltier, you said something a few minutes ago. I'm going to put words in your mouth. So, if you have any physical water retention buried in your yard, you have to go through MWRD, even if you're a single family? Was that, that's not what you were insulating? Okay.
No, but the, actually, almost the opposite. MWRD does not regulate a single-family home. They don't require detention, and these calculations are primarily for calculating runoff and therefore required detention, like allowed runoff and required detention.
So, the permits you were referring to were not for single-family homes?
Correct.
Okay.
Good.
I had one further comment.
I was just going to say, I thought that the list of items underneath this work plan item were very comprehensive, but as I was sitting here and listening to everyone's comments, there were two things that I was thinking. Number one, I think for our purposes, we'll probably have to have very broad categories as far as permeability credits or whatever. The second thing is, there's a house not too far from me that was recently purchased, recently built, and they created some slopes on their property. So, this gets me thinking about the permeability of the underlying soil is also highly relevant because now, when it rains heavily, there is ponding on the lot line between that house and the other houses. And they have dirt and grass, but apparently that water is not soaking in. So, I'm not sure if we want to do, explore that idea at all as far as reasonable slopes and things like that on property when we get into this issue of permeability, just an idea.
So, one thing we might want to discuss as we proceed here is whether we want to recommend keeping the all or nothing or applying percentages. So, that information for other communities might help. Information on how MWRD calculates it might help, but that's for going forward, just tuck that back into the, tuck that into the back of your heads. Staff, are there any items, issues that you want us to add to this list or are we missing anything?
I don't think so. No?
Okay. I don't think so. This is what, what are we planning to do now?
Um, what was it? What did you? Sorry. I might have been brain fart.
This is a good conversation. There's lots of information that was shared and we've got notes and a meeting to look back on as far as your comments. So, this will take a while to, to put together and process, which is great that it's part of the work plan. So, we've got items coming up on the agenda. There are things that you'll have to review for the code updates, and then this is a, a good portion of things that we would love to address sooner than later, but certainly is going to take time to get right. And so, we'll take the feedback, we'll put a, kind of a summary together and probably come back in a couple mon, couple meetings, I would say. It's, it's not going to be instantaneous unless there's something specific that you want to focus on first, maybe? Or, or you want to see it as a package that we kind of bring back and discuss portions of at, you know, at your discretion.
I personally would rather let you, your office, work on it and explore it and research the heck out of it and then come back to us, and then maybe we'll piecemeal some particular things.
Great.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Next on our agenda is information, staff update regarding gravel driveways improvements and which have converted to asphalt or permeable pavers.
So, from Chairperson Mateo and I, we both have a, a list from the June 2020 meeting. It was a list of 29 properties that were identified as having gravel driveways in Riverside. And of those 29, we have five that have come into compliance. And by compliance, I mean they have converted from gravel to either concrete, asphalt, or permeable pavers. Let's see, five of those have applied. There were a handful that were on this list of June 2020 that after I, I went around to the specific properties, they were actually asphalt driveways that are just in very poor condition. And the rest, so that leaves 20, 19 or 20 properties that have, that still have the gravel driveways, but they have not made any improvements in terms of the edging or if there were any sort of like ruts or just kind of space, you know, kind of dips in the, in the property. So, the majority of the gravel driveways still kind of stand where they have been for a while now. So, we'll be sending out letters next week reminding them of the deadline that it is at the end of the year to the remain, to the remaining properties. And then after that, we decided that, after that deadline, we'll start sending out letters and with, you know, information that we're going to begin to cite the, the property owner so that they can come into compliance with the edging or the gravel if it needs to be fixed in any way. And then I think that's what we had decided. Missing anything for the citations?
We understand that as it's the end of the year, there's going to be snow on the ground before we know it. It's not practical for people to be doing, you know, paving their driveways at this point in the year. So, the idea is to remind them that they should be taking action on this and either applying for a permit, providing us content to say, you know, "We're taking action on this when it's warm." Those that are not going to be doing that are, are getting reminded that we will cite the property and bring them to adjudication to, to seek compliance next year.
And when might that be?
When would we be issuing citations?
Well, the second letter that reminds them that they're going to be cited, and then will that letter say, "Starting this date, you're going to start, you're going to be cited."
So, this upcoming letter we're sending next week will be that reminder. And then in the spring, it, it's not practical for us to write a citation in January, say, to bring them to adjudication in February because again, there's, there's not going to be the ability to take action. So, I would imagine we'll probably start writing tickets, I would say, you know, March or April to, to get people in the door.
Any questions, comments?
What is the ticket, so to speak?
So, when adjudication occurs, the fees vary. I think the maximum fine that can be issued is $750. They're not always that way. The prosecutor that acts on behalf of the village sets a, you know, the, the set proposed fine, and the adjudication hearing officer determines whether to impose that fine. At times, I have had experiences where they set a particular fee or fine, and should the, the property owner remediate that issue by the next hearing or a set date, then that fee is removed and, and they're not liable for that. Really, the, the goal of adjudication is compliance, and it's a reminder in an official capacity to bring people in and talk about the issue, have them work with village staff, and ultimately have them do the work that needs to be done in a certain timeframe. So, that's, that's what our goal is, and, and a lot of the time, we're able to work with property owners. When they get a, a yellow ticket in their hand, there's, that level of concern raises just a little bit. And I guess that ultimately, we just want to work with them on making sure this is corrected. And there's been plenty of time to, and plenty of notices in order to let them know about this issue.
So, if the adjudication is successful, they're, they're fined, they have X amount of time to fix it, remediate it. This is a pretty large project, so what would that, if you could estimate what that amount of time would be? And then if they don't do it, they're fined again and come to adjudicate, adjudication?
Yeah, we could approach it from a variety of Yeah, we could approach it from a variety of actions. So if there's a property owner that we've cited and they come to us between the citation being issued and the adjudication process, and say, here's my permit application, I've got a contractor all lined up, and we issue a permit for that work, then, you know, a lot of the time, we'll bring it to adjudication and dismiss that, that charge, because that's what we want them to do. If there's no action or they fail to appear at adjudication, or we can't get a hold of them, then there's the opportunity to cite them more than once. So we do have, I would have to check the code, but we have the ability to continue writing citations until we get compliance, and that judgment can be issued however many times until we get the issue fixed. So it's not ideal. It's not what we would prefer to do the first, the first opportunity to get everybody to just do as they need to is the preference, of course. So, but it's a nice way, a not-nice way to get someone's attention and hopefully connect with them in order to work productively.
More questions, right? But I recall that pea gravel was the only gravel that was accepted for material. Is that the case, or am I mistaken?
So those who have the traditional chunky white gravel or what's left of it, they can refresh that with one to two inches of an even label, layer of that type of gravel. But other homes, if they want to take out an asphalt driveway, they cannot use that material. They have to use pea gravel, gravel with siding. Is that right?
Yeah.
And my recollection is in part that was because of the permeability issue, because we had testimony or information that that straight-sided gravel basically becomes impermeable over time. So that'd be another issue, I guess, for the impermeable, like what kind of, what kind of paving material do people have if they have pea gravel? Would be reasonable to give them some credit for that, right, versus old-fashioned gravel. But that's for the future.
And do, do we have asphalt driveway maintenance standards? Because as you noted, noted, there are a few of these that aren't gravel. They are just falling apart.
I believe there are. I'll have to double-check. But I can, I can look into it and send an email out with the pertinent part of the ordinance.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Well, our next meeting is Monday, December 20. Hopefully, that's been on your calendar for a long time. And we will be having it, it looks like.
I believe so.
We do have agenda items. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Sumo.
Second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Brom?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Hennigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye. Motion passes. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and see you just before or during some other holidays in December. Thank you, everyone.